Planning Commission meeting is November third.
Second.
November second to order. Start with opening remarks and pledge by Frank Bar.
My opening remarks in the form of a prayer. Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to be having this beautiful valley to be assembled. Talk about the finding zoning needs of this Cache Valley and the residents of it. Try to direct our thoughts and actions as we contemplate those meetings. Most fitting and relevant. Lives that are affected here in Cache Valley. Grateful for this beautiful weather, this fall season. Take care of those needs of the public. Direction. Hope you'll join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Review of the agenda in minutes, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Minutes from last month.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next four items, Gershon Ranch subdivision, Peet Viner Vineyard Farm subdivision, Delray subdivision, and H. subdivision, First Amendment. Consent items, so they meet all the requirements. County just to approve those and move those forward without diving into it too deeply. Three of them are, the first two are just extensions. Fourth one, it looks like it'll take some, another individual coming in?
It will, and currently they weren't aware of it until today.
Well, so we'll probably see the other one maybe next month?
Yes, hopefully. And that is the condition, they have to be reported.
Other than that.
I'll make a motion to approve the items one, two, three, and four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item five, Geneva Rock, need to pick conditional use permit.
Yeah, this has been before the commission a couple of times, so I'll just kind of go through some updates. It is a request to operate a commercial mineral extraction and excavation facility on 157 acres in the Axone, which involves mineral extraction overlay. It was initially presented to Planning Commission on July sixth. At that time, the request was continued for up to ninety days to revise the master plan, update conditions of approval, and clarify access with UDOT. Came back last month, yeah, I apologize if I was not here. But it was again continued up to ninety days just to clarify a few more things and update the site plan. So UDOT has approved access from Route twenty-three. Kind of in line with forty-eight hundred west. That is a temporary one until the county goes through and does a reclamation to realign forty-eight hundred west. The other things that still need to be updated, Planning Commission would recommend doing a sample level study to establish a base campfire voids level for the receptors, which were identified as near a single home or church or just sensitive receptors. More detail regarding lighting on the site. Addressing the extraordinary hours, updating how the water will be supplied. Master plan, revise master plan, store first onsite water rights instead of onsite water stores. Changing the slope, mine slope ratio to three to one for the county engineers' reclamation. There is concern about making sure vegetation is established via the reclamation, not distributed. For the county engineers' reclamation, three to one allows for better vegetation establishment on those stores. And including a percentage area to be reclaimed once the mine slope is established. And I've added all of those as conditions of approval. There was one comment where it said that we remember people who was not included, but apparently was on second sixty, like plan notes, so it's as shown in. I just asked that they add that to revise the master plan and part of the condition of approval. As far as extraordinary hours, I condition that so that in the event that they need that, they need to submit a request to the Director of Development Services to review, including the hours of operation, the dates, size, and duration of those extraordinary hours. Preferably those should be done three weeks in advance of the extraordinary hours. But if, you know, the situation is critical, I just so generally be aware and answer questions when the public is ready. Of hours beyond what is allowed. With that, again, I think we addressed all of the conditions. Staff has put in there the three to one slope, but the applicant would still like the two to one slope. And then, yeah, there was some clarification about the ore acceptance receptors. Going over the July fifteenth meeting, I believe it was, just in there, people not understanding all of the problem. But with that, unless you have any questions?
We also asked Matt Phillips to come this month, just to let him come up first and talk about the road.
Sorry, rusty after missing last month, apparently. We're gonna put the microphone out.
Man, we had a couple of questions. We had a couple of questions last month about that road and the county's plan at some point to realign it. There were enough other things, that's why we extended it up to ninety days and got it ready by this month. One was, is there any timeframe of the county, it just, you would like to do it at some point, but there's no time.
Conversations with us and UDOT, think that it's wise to have that realigned? What longer is it to have that site distance?
Probably better to have that, where you can have more queue, better site distances, and so. If in the future, we change that, five years, ten years, then, you know, that would put their pit entrance in a bad location, so UDOT would put that in their permit to just, they would be required to move their access to match.
They have that in there, that they would do that.
To line back up.
Given when that happens.
Correct.
They may have their pit done and closed before that happens, if, you never know, yeah, we don't know.
That's very possible.
What, why, why is it not, you know, why is there not like some proportionality there, responsibility for them?
Uh, 'cause the access to UDOT road, they're not accessing the county road, so.
And, and basically because UDOT has permitted.
Yeah, if, if they were accessing a county road or something, they had other, some other options, they just wanted to save. So by aligning it, we feel like between us and UDOT, that's probably the safest place for their trucks to enter and exit. But that's more of a safety or a spot improvement, that really falls back to the county with increased usage and traffic and those types of things, so.
So right now, just confirming then, the access will align with forty, forty-eight hundred west?
Yeah, essentially that would be more of like a four-way instead of just a T-intersection. And they, they could speak to whether UDOT's requiring some D-cell lanes, I don't know. Or I'm not aware of their final agreement with UDOT on if they have to do some widening for D-cell and Excel lanes.
There it is.
I, I thought there probably would be.
I think at least for me, that was what I, I wanted to see if Matt had any further input on that.
No, the, the only other one I know that's coming up is the slopes. So normally when we have gravel pit operations, we're wanting those guys to reclaim those. Two to one is very hard, it takes a little more maintenance. So usually we start off with three to one, that's preferable, that's, if they're gonna grade it, you're gonna put topsoil on it, and you're gonna broadcast seed and throw it on there. It's, it takes a little more work to do two to one than it does three to one. And we're gonna get better revegetation on the three to one. And I know that's been a concern of the Planning Commission and just general public is leaving a big scar on the mountains, or. Theirs happens to be depressed, so you might not be able to see all of that, it's fairly deep. But a two to one slope on them is, I mean, the very backside of that is four hundred feet deep. So you change the slopes from a three to one to a two to one on four hundred feet, that's a substantial amount of grading. It changes your toes quite a bit, so. In some discussions with them, and, and I think they might address it, is I'm happy to reduce that from three to one down to two to one, if they're willing to maybe take a little more effort. You know, they might have to babysit it a little bit more and we can still get that revegetated in appropriate manner, so.
Fiber mats, I mean, yeah, there's a number of ways, they're still expensive potentially, but may give you better.
But just to grade it and throw seed out there, usually three to one, and most of our pits aren't quite four hundred feet and a hundred feet deep and those types of things, so. I'm, you know, it is possible to revegetate two to one, but it's not, you just can't let Mother Nature do a hundred percent of the work. And I think that they, in small discussions with them, I think that they have a little more experience than most of our miners around here by trying to revegetate this and have some techniques that would probably do very well at a two to one.
Any questions for Matt?
So Matt, if you look up there on the map, right where it shows the Highway twenty-three number.
Yes.
That corner of Staker Parsons property, so if you cut the road down there and you're looking, and you cut it down so it hits the same elevation as forty-eight hundred west, if you're looking, which would be left there to the north, you won't be able to see over the, that little corner of Staker Parsons property to see to the north, is there a plan to be able to have, be able, so those drivers can see looking north?
I don't know, once, once you get on the state road, then that jurisdiction goes to them to make sure that their D-cell Excel lanes and their site visibility all is done through UDOT, so.
Cause I stopped on the corner there again today, I just was going by, and you look and, and it's, if you cut it down so it's the same elevation as forty-eight hundred west, you're gonna be pretty deep. And it's, you know, it's, it'll, it's still gonna be a hazard unless we address it.
And I, and I don't know if we can put conditions on that or not. Where we don't, we don't control that access, we, we don't have anything in our code to go put more conditions on UDOT.
Zoom in on that, so how much of that would fall on UDOT's right of way, that hill?
Well, the, what, what Val J's talking about is their access, right? Being able to see oncoming traffic so you could merge.
Yeah, I was just thinking, when they, when they widen that, put that D-cell in lane, are they gonna be taking some of that out anyways, potentially? I don't know what the design is with UDOT.
They might be able to see if that's been part of their conditions or part of that review. Most of my meetings with UDOT, they'll actually have someone go out there and do a study with some topography to make sure that that's possible, and I don't know if that's been done or not.
Doesn't really show on the map.
Yeah, yeah, that would probably be something that would just be submitted to UDOT.
Yeah.
And, and their traffic engineering division. Valid concerns, I just, I don't have the answer for you, whether they're, UDOT's looking at that or not.
Okay, I think that's it for you, Matt, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Would the applicant like to come up and take a few questions or answer a few, clarify a few points there for us?
Yeah, we'll both come up. Bill, Bill Gammel with Geneva Rock Products.
Bill King with Geneva Rock Products, make it easy, one name to remember.
Yeah. So I think that's a valid concern, the, the line of sight and being able to see oncoming traffic on Highway twenty-three coming around the corner. We were out onsite earlier today and noticed that as well. So UDOT, I guess, the, if you can share, it'd be helpful. That they're putting a D-cell lane coming in there, and so it will cut out some of that, and, and that will gain, you know, us fourteen feet of a shoulder, a paved shoulder, and then we'll have another slope, four to one off the edge of that, until UDOT's right of way. So that's gonna help cut down to some extent that, but it's our intent that our truck drivers can see well into it. And so if there's a safety hazard there, it's in our best interest to cut that, that down. And you can actually see up on that, the, the lower map, on the upside, is forty-eight hundred west. So you, that's where you leave our pit, you left, right, straight. So if you can see to the left, there's, right?
Here is that property lining up.
So there is a little bit of setback on there, and with the radius as it comes around, that's, that's why that is set back, 'cause we're trying to get it lined up straight with the forty-eight hundred west. But that was as far as the radius was supposed to be, and, and so that we can actually have the line of distance, and. Not that I'll tell any of the truck drivers of this, but you, the stop sign significantly back into our property with those D-cell lanes that will be constructed, and so you'll be able to see down both of the D-cell and acceleration lanes that will be installed. I think it's been addressed with the plan that's been submitted to UDOT, and they've, they've approved that, so. Go ahead.
Does UDOT propose doing any additional signage trucks or even slowing traffic coming from the, out of Newton and headed east, or they say anything there?
Well, I'm su, I'm certain that they won't reduce truck, or reduce speed limits, but I'm, I, I would have to look on signs, I'm assuming there probably are signs.
Well, it's their deal, I just was simply curious.
I don't know, I'd have to look through, but I'm, I'm sure there is some signage, like trucks entering highway signs. That's usually what we have to do at five hundred foot increments on a sixty-five mile an hour road, so. Probably, but I'd have to get back with you on that one.
And do you want to address anything on that, the slope, the two to one versus three to one?
I did want to talk about the slope, where the county does permit a two to one slope, that is, in the county code. And, you know, we work with a lot of counties throughout Utah and the surrounding states to where typically the, the reclamation, the, the end reclamation is the angle of repose of the type of material we're mining, you know, and aggregates or sand and gravel loo-ial deposits tend to be around a one and a half to one on the angle of repose, and so a two to one is a little more generous. A three to one is very generous, but we did bring some pictures of a bunch of the different pits that we have reclaimed. Some of these are one and a half to one, and some of these are two to one, and it can show that with the different reclamation practices that we have established, which in Geneva Rock, we can have a lot of success with, with our, our reclamation.
Do they identify which one's which?
No, you can tell by looking at them, some are a little steeper than the others, but the majority of those are a one and a half to one within that. And with our reclamation practices, the way the mine is phased, you know, we feel very confident that we can get that, on the two to one, we can get full vegetation, and then again, we will have that reclamation, that surety bond in place, which will be in place to make sure that vegetation is taken, has grown, established, thank you, before we can terminate that reclamation bond on the site.
That's, I was looking at that hole, like Matt said, changing that one, one percent, that's a lot of.
Difference for us.
That's a lot of, I can do the calculation, but that's a lot of fill yards you can't sell if it's the three to one versus two to one.
Correct.
Being, being that deep.
That's our challenge, is for the same disturbed acreage, you get significantly reduced quantities of material that come out of there when you reduce that, and so obviously, we would rather work in one spot and disturb one area than, okay, now we get significantly less volumes and we go on to the next resource when that time comes. So we, that's why we're willing, and I think ultimately, this isn't like, I don't think it's a safety issue, the two to one, it's, you know, most of our native slopes out there are steeper than two to one, native mountains. Dogum, the Division of Oil Gas and Mining, they are in bedrock, so it's hard rock quarries, but their final reclamation slopes are one to one. That's what, any of our hard rock quarries, that's what we go to, is the one to one slope.
Right, but there's no expectation of vegetation on one to one slopes, so.
Yeah, I mean, the idea is that it ravels and over time it vegetates, but yeah, you're right. Now this one, the two to one, in my mind, it's, it's all about vegetation, right? So how, how can we get this at final reclamation to look like a native hill? Is, is our goal with this reclamation project. And so, rather than taking a bunch of material that's usable, is there another condition that we could put in the permit that says, the county shall have the ability to hold the reclamation bond, you know, beyond vegetation, you know, let's say we vegetate in the spring one year, and then you can hold the bond until the vegetation's established to the county's liking, you know, maybe, I don't, I don't know what a standard, but generally is seventy percent of native, so.
Seventy percent coverage.
Yeah, so when it hits seventy percent, you know, then we, we re, we get the bond and we can have our money back, and you guys are satisfied with the, the reclamation project. That's, I mean, that's something that we would rather commit to than a three to one because there's significant amount of material that we leave on the site if we do that.
In, in my professional practice, you know, you, you, you'll have twice as much success with a three to one, you know, in getting a solid cover of vegetation, so I certainly understand, and typically, if, if we're working with anything steeper than three to one, we require an erosion control blanket or something like that, you know. So that might be a consideration too, you know, what, what are some of the BMPs that could be implemented to achieve, you know, a seventy percent coverage?
And we like to try to keep it open, some of the reclamation practices, if we seed it and we notice that it's not having a lot of success, then maybe we can, may come try another standard.
Yeah.
Or we may roll out the blanket before we roll a blanket out over all the slopes.
I, I think a cover percent, you know, standard makes sense, let you guys figure out how to get there.
Yeah, I agree with that. Between that and holding that bond an extra year or two, whatever it takes to get that established, 'cause with those dry sites, sometimes you do that seeding, and then you have a horrible, you know, kind of your fall or sprouting, just like seeding CRP fields, sometimes it takes.
Yeah.
Couple tries to get that to take.
And, and I will say, all these pits that you're looking at, they're active pits that we're operating today. And so that's, I mean, that's with our phase mining plan that we already have proposed. When there's a final slope done, it's our intent to establish vegetation thin. And, and our permit requires us to do that, and so there are some slopes that will be vegetated for several years before the pit's completed, and I think that's a really big win for the county, and frankly, it helps us manage our site better because once that vegetation's established, it helps, you know, screen the site, it helps dust, it helps erosion control, and ultimately, when you're done, you know, it's this big reclamation project that we have to babysit. That way, when phase one's complete, we have our final slopes, we're already, you know, we're already getting the vegetation established, we're there to fix if there's some erosion happening, and that, that stuff's already built into the, the reclamation plan that's proposed. This is just, I feel like, an added assurance that, you know, if you could have a seventy percent type thing or hold the bond for two growing seasons or something like that, that's just a, it gives you guys an ability to say, hey, it's not quite there yet, you know, it's, it's not what we want it to be, that's not our idea of a reclaimed site. And so I think for this specific item, we would, you know, really appreciate going, being, having, having the ability to go to two to one, and then giving you guys the assurance that, hey, we've got these items, these conditions in this permit that give us ability to make sure that that thing gets reclaimed the way that it's planned.
If you're reclaiming along the way, so holding the bond really only is the end effect of the, of the pit, right?
In, in theory, it should have an excess bond if we are reclaiming along the way, 'cause you'll have fifty percent of it reclaimed when you're mining out the rest, but you'll have a bond for the entire area.
Steve, do you know the policy on holding that bond?
Do you have a question, Mr. Bar? The ones that we've released in the past, the engineering department's got to inspect them to make sure that things are going, so. I, I don't know if we need an extra requirement to hold it, it probably won't hurt to have that noted in the conditions, but I think we have the ability to hold that until we feel like the reclamation is satisfactory.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, because your inspection is what clears that bond, isn't it?
Correct. And typically with the reclamation bonds with the county or with the state, once we've graded it, you know, they will reduce the bond, you can reduce it up to sixty percent if we've graded it and seeded it and hold that remaining forty percent just to make sure the seed takes, and if there's any husbandry practices or anything else we need to go up there to repair. I know there isn't anything written like this in your code, but that is a standard practice that we work with.
And typically state code requires that we're able to give partial releases of bonds after they do part, part of the work, but we won't release the full bond until the work is complete.
Hey, I'm, I would be comfortable putting that in there, that, I mean, like I say, we don't need a state, we're holding the bond, we could put it in there for extra measure, but put in that seventy percent coverage is the standard, and then Matt's department, they sign off on that when they're looking, but then at least we have a, a number, and that's a pretty easy standard to go out there and grade that, what, what percent coverage you have. That's a pretty easy metric to use, I think, so. I would be comfortable adding that one in there, depending on what other commissioners think. To let them, to let them stick with the, the two to one that they have in their, their, their design here, their site map.
I don't know, we could, we could add that, but I, I gotta say, the pictures that they've shown there and their expertise in the industry, I would think that thirty percent is probably sufficient, and, I mean, again, Matt's gonna expect it if it's, or the department will inspect it, so they'll, they don't really turn that loose till they know it's, that they're, their approval.
Yeah, ultimately the final result is what's important.
Yeah.
That we don't end up with a big open scar for century.
Any other questions for the applicant from commissioners?
You guys are good on the noise study and all that, eh?
I did want to talk about the noise study if we're done talking about the slope. I did have a couple of questions on the noise study, I know the county does have a noise ordinance in place, correct? And so some of my question is, is, is why we're implementing an additional noise study on top of the industrial operation. As I was reading through some of the county code, you know, it, it talks about we can't exceed ten decibels above the existing ambient noise level. I'm not sure where ten comes from, I know if you read through your code, you talk about dog kennels has a, a ten decibel rule in there, but none on the industrial side, so I don't know if we're kind of comparing different activities. I know we're a lot different than a dog kennel. We talked about a noise study, in this gravel pit, you know, we are gonna be running crushers, we are gonna be running dozers, and the noise is gonna change as we develop the pit, as, as we go down. Also, depending on the wind of the day is gonna change, if the farmer's out plowing his field, it's gonna be different. If the neighbor to the north is running his crusher, there's just so many things that are subjective potentially in this noise study on, on when it takes place. I, I would propose, or what we'd like to propose is, yes, the county has the noise ordinance. Um, I, I would propose, or what we'd like to propose is, yes, the county has the noise ordinance. It is in place, it is in effect and we will follow it, but as far as doing the study, I, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda hoping we can remove that out of the conditions of the permit and keep in the, the noise ordinance that we have to comply with.
So I guess that would be a question for staff of where that ten deci- The, the noise study or he recommended the ten?
What, what do you find in other counties? I mean, what, what do you see there? If you're opening a pit somewhere else, what is, what is your noise and what do you happen to do?
They'll have the same, a, a noise ordinance where we had fallen and if there is a complaint, right, then we can come in and we'll try to establish to see if it's really happening and then we'll put preventative measures in to try to reduce any noise that they, that anyone may hear or maybe a nuisance. But as far as a noise study, no, generally we do not do a noise or we have not had.
So the intent though, for the noise study is to provide a baseline, so that if there is a complaint in the future, then we have something to base it against. You know, it's, it's just a much, as much for your protection as it is for, for the rest of it.
And I see that part, but the ten, the ten decibel one is the one I question, yeah, if it's not in code and anything industrial, if it was just pulled from the dog ordinance, that seems a little.
That's what I'm wondering.
It's not specific though to, to, to dogs, it's the decibel change is.
Right.
You know, what's perceptible, perceptible and potentially, you know, enough of a change that, you know, a sensitive receiver like a house or something like that, it would be disruptive.
So is that saying that we, that they would wanna make sure they do their study while the farmer is plowing? To see what, I mean, yeah, cause that's, to know what the, I mean, you know, a baseline, yeah, that, I, I agree, to me, I'm trying to figure out how, how they would pick the right day to do that baseline study.
I don't know how you could use ten, because I was there this morning, uh, early and it was quiet. There's nothing going on, nobody's in the fields, weren't any much traffic. So if you picked this morning and then tried to go ten decibels above, it would be nothing.
Couldn't, you couldn't start your tractor.
Right, and, and that's, that's some of our concern.
Location on that piece too, if you start down lower versus up high, that's gonna have a huge effect on it.
So, so, so the, the way it's implemented is, is you, you know, you identify the sensitive receptors that are out there today. So these would be the closest.
Yeah, there's a couple of closest, houses, house to the south.
The study, you know, a, a noise specialist would go out, they set a certain timeframe, there's a protocol to follow. It'll establish sort of the ambient noise levels and, you know, which will raise or lower depending on what's going on that day in particular. Or you could do it over multiple days, I suppose, um, to average it out. But it's, you know, really quite straightforward. I think it's probably in everybody's best interest to, to establish that baseline so that, you know, if there is a complaint down the road, then.
Well, I would think also that.
Identify that there, you know, is a change, a significant change or not.
Yeah, that the county ought to come up with various sound levels of that, because we're talking a dog kennel, which is way different than we're talking on a mining site, so.
Yeah, that's my thing, yeah, I, I mean, yeah.
You've also got the train there too within mile, mile and a half depending upon if they're coming through. There's, there's a lot of, lot of ifs out there and this time of year wouldn't be the best time to monitor with the farming cause that's basically shut down, but. So I agree with Chris, some baseline is only helpful for down the road should somebody have some questions on it, because.
I wouldn't have a problem, I guess, with the baseline. I just wonder, once we know that, that ten decibel change, right? What, what does that sound like as you're out there?
I agree.
Cause I think it, it, and I wasn't here when you crafted the dog ordinance, but I'm guessing that was because oftentimes if you have a dog kennel in, those dogs bark twenty-four hours a day.
A little bit of nuisance.
You know, that, that's different than, than a pit that might be running a certain hours of the day. And, and the dog kennels could be closer or further from the adjacent home. And I think that's where that ten decibel, again, I don't, I wasn't in that conversation at that time, but I'm guessing that's where that came from. But if we're expecting a, a mining pit to, to keep the same level of change as a dog, seems like a hard standard potentially to meet. I don't know how big that ten decibel change is. Is it that? You know, I don't, I don't know what it is.
It's a good question because we looked it up, cause we weren't sure either, but if nobody was talking in this room and then somebody started talking, that's ten decibel increase from the baseline is what we could find off of our research. But the decibel levels, I, I don't know. We, we haven't ever established really a baseline of what our crushers are doing. We've had, we have actually invited planning commissioners and city council members out because they've had this concern. And we've gone on our site while we're crushing and they've, once they've seen the crushing operation, they, they pretty much were like, okay, sounds good, we're not, we're not as concerned now that we've seen what this is and. You know, the closest receptor is the house on forty-eight hundred north or forty-eight hundred west. And we were looking at it and it's about forty feet lower than our, than the highway elevation wise. And so I think that, that does play in our favor, which will be nice, but it, it just seems kind of ambiguous, the ten and the baseline. And where, where are the receptors that, what, cause given what we were given in the staff report, it was like, okay, well, where are the receptors? It doesn't say where the receptors are. What is the, the baseline study? Do we do the baseline study for three months or do we do it for a year? Is it one day, one hour? You know, it's all those ambiguous things. We could go do a baseline and go out there right now and do a, you know, a one hour standard. And it, it's just all that ambiguity that's around this condition that scares us more than anything. I think if it was well-defined and, and we could show the industry practices are similar and that the three other pits that were permitted in the last three years have this standard, I think we'd be a lot more comfortable with it. It's not something that we've experienced as much, so.
If we don't make any adjustments to number thirteen, we need to do fix a typo prior to recording the permit, a noise study.
By.
By a license instead of by.
Instead of by a license.
That's a rebuttal right off.
Well, while we're fixing that.
I had one of, are, are we done talking about that then? Are you guys?
Well, I, I guess, I think it's up to you guys, I guess, if, if we.
Right, I do have one. So the last time we brought, um, planning staff to a site where they wanted to hear a crusher, we were on the boundary of the property and it, it was kind of ironic. At the same time, the neighbor busted out his weed eater and decided he was gonna mow his lawn and you couldn't hear anything over the weed eater, right? The, the person there running the weed eater, they couldn't even hear the crusher. You know, they had, once that weed eater fired up, you couldn't hear any of the operation. So it kinda helps put in perspective, you know, the crushers, yeah, they do make a little noise, a little, little rumble, but it's nothing like some of these other things that are going on, like a weed eater is a lot louder.
And I think that was a good point, that we are limited to certain hours of operation and so it's not gonna be at midnight or.
But you've also talked about getting emergency, you know, use where you can go twenty-four or seven.
But it's not, I mean, it's relatively, I mean, it's the exception, not the rule, I would say, but it's a valid point.
The, the, the point of, of a CUP is, is, uh, is to come up with reasonable mitigation measures uh, to mitigate the effects. We've talked about revegetation, which, you know, a lot of ways is, your, your effects on, on the scenery or the visuals and, and, um, uh, restoration, success and, and noise. Gravel pits generate noise, the equipment and stuff like that, so I mean, that's, that's all we're trying to do here. I think is to come up with reasonable mitigation measures. The, the lack of specificity, specificity, I think is in your favor to come up with. You know, we're just asking to do the study. We're not dictating how you do it or whatever. That's, you know, up to the professional that says, this is how we need to establish what the ambient noise level is now. And you don't have to do anything with that unless somebody starts complaining, so. Anyway, that's, that's my two cents on, I think why Jason and myself would like to see, um, some mitigation in there for noise.
Well, if any of us had a house near there, we'd want that for sure.
Yeah, exactly.
I would say, my only fear is if we put in a restriction that is, um, too restrictive, that the mitigation itself would prevent them from operating in a reasonable way, where our code doesn't clearly define what the noise level maximum can be, it's outside the operation hours, that that could line us up a little bit.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was wondering, cause I sat with the, the ombudsman office all day today at that meeting. We can, we can add things to help mitigate, but, but if they, they have that, ten decibel is the only one I'm concerned with. Cause I, I, to me, it seems hard to run a gravel pit out in the country where there's not a lot of noise going on a lot of the time and not have more than a ten decibel change in the ambient noise level. And if they come back and say, yeah, that, you know, that's impossible to meet that ten, that ten, we don't have that ten in our code anywhere. We just came up with it from the dog one, I see us potentially being out of compliance pretty quick with the state on that, on that, for that very reason. If we had it in our code, that any, any mining industry, any mining project can't change it by this, then it's easy to say. But where we kinda just pick that, that would be my same concern is we don't have anything in code to back that, other than we have a noise, noise ordinance. If someone complains, they can come in, we go out and see what the problem is, uh, that, you know, that, that, that's how we address it. And I would think that's how we would address this, because we don't have anything in code to regulate that. With, it could go either way, but I, I can see Stephen's point that it, to me, that seems, yeah, that we're, we're adding it in there to be extra safe, but we don't have anything to back up, why would we put that in there? The vegetation one we have, right, it's, it's seventy percent, that's, that's the industry standard, but I don't know if there's a decibel change for a rock, rock mine, decibel change. That would be my, yeah, my vote would be to take that one out because we don't have anything to back it, but.
Maybe we should get a noise expert in here to talk about what a reasonable change in, in noise might be.
I think if we're doing that, we should do that while we look at changing and putting that into code, so that it's there for any new project that comes up. Not, not hold them up while we get a noise expert, because it's not in code when they, when they came in and, and applied. But yeah, it may be, we may have some other areas of code that were noise with, having something in there might be good to have. But I think we would wanna do that in a.
Well, for the other gravel pit too, we've, we don't know of any complaints we've had in the other gravel pit, like they've been there, so we couldn't regulate them anyway.
Well, we could on noise, yeah, they could come in, someone could complain with this gravel pit that's there on noise and they could.
But they haven't.
Yeah, they, they haven't.
And we know they've been running crushers and trucks there.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Ashby commented on Parsons pit, the noise, they're running twenty-four or seven. And he mainly commented at night that there again, knowing it's happening, but there's nothing we can do about it because your grandfather did. And they're also up on top of the hill with nothing.
He's down, yeah, he's.
Yeah, he's right below them.
Just next to him there the other way.
I only bring that up because it's, it's there, but it's not applicable to.
Forgot about that, you mentioned that before that.
He'll probably open his windows at night to cool the house off and that crusher's going twenty-four seven.
Well, with what we're talking about, I just had a question on number ten, because gravel pits are closely monitored by the state division of air quality.
Yep.
And so we're talking about dust control here, talking about operation must stop. But are we gonna get a county dust monitor out there or, I mean.
They have a dust mitigation plan in here further down to.
All, all I'm saying is the state's already got that under control, so should we just simmer that down a little to say meet the division of air quality requirements or leave it as is? Is it necessary?
Yeah.
Another recommendation, I forget by which commissioner during the July meeting.
Yeah, they, they didn't have that, I don't think, last time, but that is, they do have their dust mitigation plan in there.
Aren't you closely monitored by the division of air quality?
We're regulated by the state.
Yeah.
The state through air quality and so they do have jurisdiction over that.
Yeah, I mean, the fugitive dust control plan is in there and.
It don't matter, just leave it.
It's not, I guess I'm not too concerned about it, but I think either way, they're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Whether you put, you know, shall comply with the division of air quality or you put water roads and motor truck and limiting truck speeds. I mean, it's, that's what the state's gonna require us to do, so I.
It doesn't matter for me.
On that, it, either way. I mean, I actually, I'd say that, but I'm not a lawyer, I don't know if there's something where there's two laws that do, I don't, I don't know how that would go, but.
With my experience. County doesn't, county puts that on the state.
It's similar to the roads, I think, or it's a state road, they, they do the permitting and we can't put any conditions on that.
Did you guys have any other concerns with any of those, the other conditions on there?
No.
Does anybody have any other questions for them?
You know, on the stormwater, um, plan, you know, the only time in that, it's a gravel pile, so. The only time is when we have frozen ground that we'd ever have that, uh, once you get below grade. Cause you've got all that property above you that you gotta take care of, that water's gonna come down the hill. Only time that is, is when we get frozen ground and, and we have rain on snow. Wha- wha- what's the anticipated plan in that event?
Yeah, Art, you wanna do BMPs?
Yeah, so we'll use best management practices on site to help keep the, the water on site. Um, we can use earthen berms, we'll use dams, we'll do some grading on the site to try to keep it all on site. Now, within that stormwater or the SWIP, it does allow a discharge from the site, but we have to meet certain parameters. And, and so if it's coming off of a area that's still naturally vegetated, you know, the water that runs off of there can still naturally veget, it can still run off the property. Um, anything that has touched the mining operation or removed material, that does have to meet the standards if we discharge it. Now, ours, our, uh, standard is to keep all water on site, because then it makes life easier for everybody. And, and so through the best management practices, berms, um, ditches, ponds, uh, you know, digging out, making a depression there, we'll, we'll put all those in place to keep the water on site.
Yeah, well, it's just, you know, it'll happen once in twenty years. We'll, we'll have that rain on snow event and you'll, you know, you're gonna have your crusher set up there. You're, it's gonna start raising, you're flooding it out, so you're gonna stick a pump in and start pumping it down that bar pit. It goes, and then it'll, it'll actually head north and then it comes across the road because there's just a tiny culvert there.
They, they won't be able to pump it out. The permit won't allow that.
Well.
We, we, we technically could discharge the water, but it would have to meet all the total system.
You'd have to pump it through one of those big silt bags first.
Our, I guess our intent is to, with all of our pits for that matter, is we want all the water going into a pit that won't overflow and, and we mine, we'll set up our mines so that we, we always like to mine at a four percent slope going back into the hillside so that the water, you know, while our crusher's set up here in the bank that we're feeding off of here and then you've got this area for water to pond down there.
I guess the second part of that, are you going to go up on the upper part of your property and build some berms to divert that runoff water around your property?
We're still evaluating.
Yeah, I would say yes. Uh, what we envision is you'd push the top sill back and keep shoving it back as phases open up so that when you get to your final phase, depending on, cause that phase is like a fanned approach and you'll just push that out to the borders and as that berm goes along, it gets bigger and creates an area so that the water doesn't infiltrate into the pit.
Go around to state or Parsons.
No. Comes around, it will go into our pit.
No, I, I shouldn't have said that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, you know, it.
And, and the SWIP, the thing with the SWIP is it is a living document. If we have an event that causes a problem, we reevaluate it and use different practices to make sure that it doesn't happen again. So, you know, but we will have, the benefit of a gravel pit is the rock, you know, rock check dams and different areas to filter. We have rock on site that we can beef that up quickly and on site immediately when it happens too, so. And we do, we train, we have annual training, uh, that Bill and I do with our folks on site. And we do an annual comprehensive site evaluation and then we do monthly inspections that we're looking at those. We have those where we, we have a record of those and when the state comes in, they audit it and look at all of our, all of our best management practices, our SWIP and all of our inspections that have happened, so.
Matt had a finger up.
Yeah.
I don't know if the mic's working or not, but just to make sure the planning commission may be a learning opportunity. There's two different types of stormwater we're talking about. One of them, they're talking about stormwater discharges from their site, the other one is just county code. So, if they were to just burn that around, and they're increasing the stormwater flow to their neighbors or other places, and they're increasing that stormwater, that's a county code. But if the stormwater goes through their site, such as the dust, such as tracking, those types of discharges to, you know, the natural places. That's regulated by the state under a permit by the state. But if you were to reclaim all that with something, and now you've increased the runoff, the state's not looking for increased runoff. They're just looking at the kind of equality, so there is two different kind of codes there. So, if they were to start increasing and sending a whole bunch of stormwater that's, and they're increasing that downstream to some of these culverts you're talking about, that would come back to county code.
Clarification.
I have no other questions.
Okay, I think you've answered a lot for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone from the public that would like to comment on this?
Number thirteen just still in there?
I think, uh, my recommendation would be to take it out. I think Chris's recommendation would be to leave it, so we've gotta have that, a motion and a vote, one way or the other. Or one way and it fails, and then the other way, yeah. Okay, commissioners, any further discussion? If not, I would take a motion to what you would prefer to do.
Was there any verbiage any you wanted changed, for anybody, or leave it as is?
Sounds like with council a little bit, the, the thirteen could be if he, if we left it in there, that we could be. Because we don't have anything in code to back it up.
So, are we taking thirteen out?
But didn't when we, when we started to.
Depends on the motion, but that would be my preference.
When we started the dog kennels, we really didn't have a decibel noise level, and that's what got it in there, is when we were doing those dog kennels.
Then, yeah, then we went back, you probably went back and revised code to put that in there.
Right, but we, while we were looking at those dog kennels.
But that was ba, that wasn't just us deciding it, that was based off. We had fifty feet from the property line and, and the decibels, there was a lot of, there was a lot of factors.
There were some studies. Yeah, there was.
There was a lot of factors.
Lot of factors that went into that.
I was thinking other, they looked at some other county standards, and that's where they came up with that ten decimal on the dog.
As I, I think my only concern, the state code required, allows us to apply reasonable conditions on a conditional use permit. And if it is not reasonable, for instance, if our condition prohibits them from being able to do a legal act on their property, that is the basis of the zoning. Then, I feel like our, that condition would not have legal grounds to stand on if imposed too strictly. And so, I think there might be reasonable steps you want to do to mitigate sound, although our code strictly specifies the time of day of operations. Which is one of the big controls you do for sound and noise, um, uh, noise trespasses. But the ten, I do agree, the ten decibels, I'm a little nervous, but that is not a large jump. About the average conversation with somebody just talking is sixty decibels, um, in a room, and. So, ten decibels is not a huge amount of noise. And so, I, I share a little bit of concern about a strict implementation of decibel level. Unless we have something really concrete showing why that ten decibel, where are we on that ten decibels from?
I agree.
Yeah, I would just echo the same thing, that we can't have any conditions that conflict with state law, and our conditions have to be reasonable. And the problem with doing a hard and fast line is you have to be able to show that that's reasonable, and, uh, like it's been mentioned previously. Ten decibels is close to a leaf falling on the ground, that's, it's very, very quiet. So, and if you, if you wanna try and defend that line, that hard and fast line, ten decibels is reasonable, I think that, that might be a stretch.
For, for a mining operation.
For a mining operation, that, that would be, that would be a challenge, that would be an uphill battle, I'll just say.
And I would agree with that, but is there any, any place in the code, or anybody that's come up with a standard decibel next to a mining or around a mining? We don't know that, right?
We do not know that.
No, but I were.
I just don't remember, how did we even get ten with the dogs? I thought it was from professional, or other counties, I don't know.
It was other counties when.
Maybe that's what it was.
Well, there were some studies done on that, that was comparison to.
But with the fifty feet from the property line, that seemed to work, and it seemed to be accepted with dogs, but. Again, I'm not saying that we got the right thing.
To give you a reference, just a quick Google search, a quiet whisper is about thirty decibels.
So, what you're not getting here is that it's ten decibel difference from the ambient noise.
Above the ambient.
And so, if you go out there with a, 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 a noise measuring device, it's probably seventy to eighty right now, on a quiet day even. And so, it's, it's the difference between that and, and, uh, you know, after, once the operation is up and going. So, it's important to keep that in perspective, ten decibels.
It's not from.
In and of itself is, doesn't sound like a lot, pardon the pun, but, um, it's the change of existing conditions.
Above. That's a good point, too.
I guess that, that's a good point, but if you, you're gonna say, so they, they test that, they, they put out receptors, and it goes over twenty-four hour period, and they pick the highest decimal level during that twenty-four hour period. If there's seven trucks coming out of the other pit all at once, and that decimal level is, is up here, so now we're ten above that? Is that kinda how that test is probably done?
Exactly, it's kind of an average of, uh, over a set time, right? You set up the equipment and you, you, you know, for a certain amount of time, could be an hour, I, I don't know the specifics, I know that there are experts at this.
Some theory could have extremely loud noise.
You can have numerous extremely loud noise, those are the peaks, right? And, and so, the measurement is kind of the average over that timeframe, typically taken multiple times, you know, not just one time, but.
So, given his explanation, it lessens the impact that's been described when you try to defend that.
Yeah, that would make more sense than just a flat ten decibel.
Right.
But, but I think that's also receptor side too, right?
Yes, a- at the receptor side.
A quarter mile.
Exactly, it's not at the property boundary or anything like that, it's, it's really to the nearest sensitive receptor, which would be a residence in this case.
So, given that, it's.
I guess my only concern with, and I agree, that's, I mean, that's how it says it's supposed to be done. So, so they do the study, and, and we get the numbers, so let's say it's seventy-five out there now, and they can't go above eighty-five. They don't, they don't know that they're above eighty-five until they get out there and they start tearing the mountain apart, and then we go out there and say, you're at eighty-seven, you're done. Yeah, how, how do we, I guess how do we?
That's not gonna, that's not gonna be how it happens, right? It's gonna come from, you know, an upset neighbor, right, at the sensitive receptor, who's gonna say, this is ruining my life, and complains to the county. And then, you know, you're gonna have to go back out there and do a study to try to document what the differences are.
So, so if it is.
It's extremely unlikely it's gonna happen, right?
Right, I, I agree, and again, that, that's why I'm wondering why it's, why we put it in there. One, it's extremely unlikely that it's gonna happen, but, but if it does, if, if the neighbor does come in, because he know, they know we put this in there, and, and it is bigger than that ten decibel change. And now, we're working with, with the, the pit operator to try to mitigate that down to ten decibels. And if there's not a way to do it at that point, then do we come back, and now we're in trouble with the state, because we, I don't know, that, that's for the legal team here to tell us.
The, the tough part is, we don't have a controlled environment out there that's the same all the time. Farming, the train, and the existing pit truly are your noise makers.
Well, you choose when you get your averages, there's, there's a point of that when you're doing that.
Well, and I appreciate that, but if we go out there and measure right now, farming's over for the year.
So, you would do it at a period of time when you're expecting all of those conditions to be happening?
But in the meantime, do we hold them up till we go do that, or?
Well, it would seem to me there's a way of saying that we meet just exactly what Chris is saying, that if you take an average on those things.
But he's saying you gotta wait till the tractors are back in the field, it truly isn't gonna be till spring again.
That's all ag, I mean, I don't know what Parsons are running, I know the train now, Val J, how often does the train go through out there?
Um, not as often as used to.
It's only Wednesdays through Richmond now.
Yeah, it's just a few times, three times a day.
But just that, oh, d- daily?
Yeah, out there it's more, because it just, they make the cut across, it's the one that comes all the way down, that's less often.
If I could just add one more thing, so, the standard isn't that, you know, it has to be perfect, it just has to be reasonable. And there has to be sufficient evidence in the record that you discussed it, and then you reached that conclusion that that was reasonable, and that you had sufficient reason to believe that that condition would address and mitigate that condition. And so, we don't, you don't need to craft a perfect condition, it just needs to be reasonable to address, to, to mitigate that issue. It's not to completely eliminate it, we've had that the same discussion with, you know, the RV park. That it doesn't, we're, mitigate does not mean eliminate, it just means mitigate, it means minimize. So, if the, if the home, if the residents hears the gravel pit in operation, that's okay. They can hear it, you know, every day, but just as long as you're mitigating that effect, so.
Then do they know if it's that gravel pit or?
You know, mitigation could mean just don't operate at night, or mitigation could mean put a, you know, put a burn on a certain side of your property or something. It doesn't have to eliminate the noise, it just has to mitigate it. So, if you put a condition in place that would reasonably mitigate it, then you're, you're okay.
So, I would rather say that we have conditions that reasonably mi- mitigate noise with a couple of those things than doing the study, because the study to me still just seems, the, the ten just seems to be a funny number to pick.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's apparent, we need, we need to get educated on, on these, on this in particular, and, and, and get some, uh, some folks who, who know how to, you know, do those studies, or understands noise, and can talk intelligently to us, and tell us why.
There you go, training for the future.
Tell us why it's needed.
And I think, and to me, it would be even more different if we didn't already have a crusher going next door that can run twenty-four, seven, and. You know, it, it changes the environment more if, if you're the, the only one out there, you got one going that has no restrictions currently. So, I don't, uh, to me, I still don't see what the study's gonna gain us on this one. But you guys are gonna make the motion, not me, so, one side or the others.
Can we substitute and, and use those reasonable mitigation? As a substitute condition?
Yeah, and I think like he said, the Burma stuff's gonna be there as soon as they get phase one and get that pit excavated, they're gonna be down in a hole, and now you have a wall blocking that sound. And so, that reasonable mitigation, I think of what you would require if you were doing some of those measures, is already in place once phase one is implemented, in my mind, but. Just the way, looking at the map, that I would envision that, but.
Ti- temperature and cloud cover and everything else.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of things.
Lot, lot of, lot of factors.
There's days at my house that I can hear the highway really good, it's two mi- miles away, and some days I never hear a thing, so.
Sorry, we're talking, we're not meaning to talk quiet, we're just saying, we don't know what.
I, I'm, I'm thinking that we pull out, um, condition number thirteen, and, um.
Approve it with the other fifteen?
Approve it, yeah, with the other, um, fifteen, yes.
Two conclusions?
I'll make, I'll make that motion that we approve the Jenny Barak Newton pit conditions minus, uh, condition thirteen.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Further discussion by commissioners?
Actually, on number six, the, the slope?
Oh, yeah, we were gonna go to that two percent, is that in six?
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 We're looking at different.
On the conditions?
Slope.
It's just, must, okay, to ensure consistency, slope ratio, but.
But just, just state what that is, the two to one?
You, you just wanna clarify it in here, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so earlier, if someone finds the earlier part of this, or the middle, so this is gonna say three to one. I mean, the actual condition says follow the, you know, other back slope, I'm just wanna make sure we're covered.
Yeah.
In case this is found.
Oh, there's a different, the conditions are what matters.
No, yeah. Yeah, the conditions are what matters, so.
But it's not clarified.
Yeah, we could add, we can, we can see if Lane will add that to the slope, the, the two to one slope into that item.
I don't see where it says it here, so I.
Well, it just says slope.
It's generic. So, two to one, and in condition six, a two to one slope?
Two to one max slope.
Max slope.
Are we?
That's if you.
Can we, where it's addressed, can we just reference where it was addressed before? And, and put the reference in?
But it was addressed as three to one, wasn't it?
Because if we don't, the document will be wrong.
Exactly, so.
Things that needed to be addressed, or did that work out, three to one, it might also call it out in another loop.
But if we call it out as two to one in the, in the condition, that supersedes anywhere else. So, just here, water supply, so slope ratio for stockpiling reclamation will be no greater than.
Two to one.
Than two to one.
Where you at?
Okay, it's in six, it's in six, what we were looking.
Did we need to specifically address also the bond for reclamation?
Well, I think according to Matt, I think we're probably good, because he, he can hold it till he approves it anyways, we don't have to say we can hold it longer than.
And seventy percent?
Two to one, okay.
I would probably address the seventy percent.
So, under reclamation of six, that it be a minimum of seventy percent before it's?
Seventy percent coverage?
Before it's approved?
Seventy percent native vegetation in the area, shall be a standard, or, or requirement after leasing, sure.
Oh, definitely, seven, vegetation. So, can you, the third, third line in per, in, in condition seven?
In seven, yep.
In ten, do we suggest we just leave it as is, or should we add per state Division of Air Quality?
I think it's fine.
You gotta do one at a time.
We'll just leave it, he's still trying to, yeah, he's still trying to get seven, catch up.
Well, to me, seven seems pretty good. We don't have to describe it.
Reclamation will not be considered complete until established vegetation is prominent, you want that to read seventy?
Would you, yeah, established vegetation is seventy percent of native vegetation in the area, which is.
Seventy, seventy percent native vegetation coverage? Be careful with the word native.
Don't want direst woe.
No, so you're, yeah, it doesn't have to be native seeds, it's the native vegetation on this hill is coverage, may, maybe fifty percent coverage, but it's not a hundred percent.
Maybe, maybe the way to help with that is, is to say, um, uh.
Not invasion.
Seventy percent.
Yeah, I think either way Matt signed it off, so I.
Coverage of, you know, targeted species or something like that.
Well, the seed mix also has to be approved by the weed, or vegetation department.
Yeah.
So, that's really covered, Dan.
It's a change through time, so I think it's good to have it, to give you guys some flexibility in the future. Plus, we've tried to get bonds reclaimed, and the surety companies will not allow it.
They won't release the bond until the governing agency.
Signs off. That's what I kinda figured, is Matt's department really has that covered, just like the other one is there. We don't have to state that they can hold it, because Matt can already, they can already hold it, he's not happy with it.
So, are we good with not changing seven?
So, seven's okay.
Seven's okay, and, and in six? And six, slope ratio for stockpiling and reclamation at two, no greater than two to one, should not exceed.
Number eight also addresses that, if you didn't already notice.
Yeah.
So, if you reclamation on stockpile, and maybe stockpiles that are angled opposed to stockpile, just.
Oh, yeah, that's true, yes, okay.
They, they can be steep.
I'm not sure how to word that.
You got that worded in there, Angie?
Uh, yeah.
I think, yeah, I think you can just take stockpiling out and add that reclamation shall not exceed the two to one slope.
That's my recommendation.
It's your motion?
Did that sound like what you guys were, okay, we wanna make sure we didn't confuse you more than we confused us. He seconded, okay, any further discussion by commissioners? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we at?
So, so we took thirteen out, there's no noise study. And we left ten in, and, and in number six, we added, uh, took stockpiling out and the reclamation is no greater than the two to one slope.
I'll be sending you a revised.
Yeah, she'll send you a revised version of it. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay, cash resource management plan.
Do we wanna talk about the flower mill first, because the resource plan might take a while? I mean, that's.
We, we can swap that, if we have people here for the flower mills, the resource plan gonna take more than ten minutes?
Depends on how you feel, okay?
But it won't take more than ten minutes, we'll stay on the schedule then. We've seen it a couple times, so it should be.
We have control over how long it's gonna take.
That's true.
As long as you guys wanna chat about it.
Okay.
Yeah, if needed, just be like Connor, just stop, went too long. Alright, so this is the third time you guys have seen the resource management plan. Um, the only differences, and just a brief refresher, um, so essentially this is a plan that focuses on public lands. Um, it assesses the current state of resources within the county, and it allows the county to es- essentially establish guidelines saying, hey, this is how we wanna go about things, and here's what we want from the federal government, or those who have, uh, um, ownership over the land. Um, here's just a reminder map of where all of the public lands are in the counties, you can see a lot of it's over on the east side, a little bit over on the west side, but most of it's over on the east side. Um, and the four new resources that are required by the state, critical minerals and rare earth elements, renewable energy, infrastructure and pipelines, and utility corridors. We sh- sent you the updated plan last week, I believe. The only differences that have happened since our last meeting is we held that public open house, and we got that final revision done, and now it's been kicked to planning commission. And so the major differences are, aren't really a lot of them, um, we can just run through it, uh, per the request of Dylan Hoyt from the plant, public lands coordinating office. Um, he essentially just asked us to include some language from the state resource management plan, so just cooperation, coordination, and consistency, nothing really crazy there. Um, critical minerals, there were no major changes to any of the goals you saw last time. The only changes that really existed were minor changes to language and just clarification of things. So an example of the desired future state, as you can see, the only change was citizens to residents. And then this is an example goal, um, same thing, changing citizens to residents, um, which may be negatively affected by environmental impacts. And you can see it's just clarifying mineral resource projects within Cache County, and then just kinda clarifying what qualifies as daily activities, so travel, access to property, access to recreation. Um, same thing here, uh, the only difference is saying Cache County, clarifying mineral resources, and it's pretty much it for that environmental goal. Do, any of you have any comments? Oh, perfect, alright, renewable energy? Let's see if it'll click. So there was an inclusion of two new goals, they're not necessarily new to the plan itself or what you saw from last time. Um, we can take a look at those here in a second. So the minor changes, same thing, just clarification of language, including Cache County, just modifying the language a little bit to just be clearer than it was originally. Um, the new goal, the first one, is just talking about protecting the residents, um, I believe you've seen this goal in the plan several times. It's nothing very crazy, it's just kind of including it in this section. Um, same thing, uh, this is another goal that was included in pipelines and infrastructure, and now we're just including it in renewable energy, just talking about protecting the visually appealing scenes of the county. Um, that's pretty much it, do you have any comments?
Good.
Perfect, alright, pipelines and infrastructure, same thing, uh, there was probably the biggest change, I would say, from what you saw last time, we can get to that here in a second. But it was talking about expanding recreational access and maintaining road access, we can get there. Uh, just another example, basically just changes the, uh, language to clarify, and just kind of, yeah, just clarify and update the language a little bit. Um, here's that goal, so essentially, as it was originally written, it could be interpreted in a way that someone could say, oh, well, hey, the county supports me building a road directly to my property, right? So the steering committee that we had mentioned that they would like to maintain road access, so essentially what we clarified is we wanna increase recreational access, but maintain existing road access, so people still have access to public lands or private property that are adjacent to public lands. That's really the biggest change that happened there in this section, I would say. Um, any comments? Alright, utility corridors, no major changes, just minor changes to the language. Um, example of that, basically just clarify language, clarify that this is in Cache County, swap out citizens to residents, just those kinda general, um, updates. Same thing here, um, increased recreational access, so essentially we just wanna say, hey, we wanna make sure that Cache County's known for its natural beauty, so we wanna make sure that they still have that opportunity to expand and take advantage of any expansion that happens in utility corridors. Um, it's pretty much it, or no real major changes since the last time you saw this.
Good, any questions for him, commissioners?
I have yours.
Looks good.
Perfect.
We're gonna meet the deadline by the end of the year.
Hopefully.
I do want, we would appreciate a recommendation.
Yeah.
And I would like to take it to the council as well.
Yep, I was gonna ask for that next.
I'll make the recommendation.
Yeah.
What we recommend, we recommend this.
Recommending approval of this to the county council.
Plan to the council, so I would make that recommendation, the Cache County Resource Management Plan, um, be approved by this commission to go to the, uh, uh, county, uh, commission.
County council.
Our county, county council, excuse me, yes, county council. I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay, you bet.
Thank you, um, uh, just to, uh, uh, be overly, um, open, my company, um, that I'm part owner in, uh, has been working with the county on this, and so I just wanted to disclose that. Not me personally, but certainly.
Disclosing that, you are still good to vote on it, so, thank you. Okay, with that, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You got to go ahead.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Angie, next one. Uh, flower milling, conditional use permit?
Yes, so this is a request to operate a general manufacturing facility on five point one two acres, the industrial zone. Uh, the proposed facility is a flower mill, which consists of a number of storage bins slash silos, uh, conveyor systems, a mill, truck scales, a warehouse, receiving area, and office space. A reuse zone was approved by the county council in March of this year, uh, to change the zoning designation from commercial to industrial. It had been originally changed from agricultural to commercial in two thousand and seven, but no commercial development had, um, been developed on the site since then. Adjacent uses, um, include, uh, industrial use to the south, the Campbell Snacks Pepperidge Farm, um, highway ninety-one is to the east, UDOT facility. And then, um, Casper's Ice Cream is to the west, about a mile down the road. Uh, the rest of the properties are used for agricultural purposes, um, and there is one house across the street on eleven, hundred and sixteenth north. Um, so they have provided a letter of intent and plans that are included in your application, and it detailed the proposed construction, phasing, and operations, as summarized in the staff report. Um, it, there are two phases, the applicant is proposing, um, to do on the site plan, I can bring that up, but you'll see the initial buildings and then some labeled as future, uh, phase. So the initial phase will consist of a hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven square feet, with the final phase build out of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine square feet, um, for their plans. Uh, the initial phase consists of six structures and twelve storage building, or storage bins slash silos. Uh, there's a mill building, uh, which is, uh, nearly nine thousand square foot structure with five levels to access the milling equipment. Uh, the structure intake suite from the storage silos cleans it, tempers it, mills it, the end product is stored in the flower bins and delivered to the local bakery, uh, which is Pepperidge Farm, across, just immediately south of this property. Uh, there is some bulk truck loadout, and smaller packages shipped by bulk truck or in the future by a, a rail loadout. Um, the proposed future phase for the mill building will double its size. Uh, the warehouse, the initial build out consists of a hun- ten thousand square foot structure, a hundred feet by a hundred feet. The primary use of the warehouses for packaging and storage of the flour. Uh, in addition, larger than the size of the initial warehouse is proposed in the next phase. Uh, the office consists of two stories, each twenty-five hundred square feet, uh, that will have offices for administrative purposes and product testing, there'll also be break rooms, restrooms, and locker rooms for employees. Uh, there is a receiving building, um, it is a six thousand plus square foot, single level structure, uh, providing weather protection for grain receiving operations. Uh, this structure is being built over a future rail spur, um, on the west side of the property, um, that will, um. That will also allow for the grain receiving from oil, um, the rail truck, the rail containers, as well as bulk, oh my gosh, bulk loading onto rail cars in the future. Uh, the truck loadout building is a single story, twenty foot by eighty foot pre-engineered metal building. Um, flour is medically loaded into trucks in this structure. Uh, there's a motor controlled center, eight hundred square foot building, and then the storage bins, silos. Um, in the initial phase, there are a total of twelve storage bin silos proposed, uh, four at twenty-four foot diameter, six at thirty-six foot diameter, and then two seventy foot, seventy-two foot diameters. Uh, the height of the proposed bins range from a minimum of seventy-one feet tall for the twenty-four foot diameter, to a maximum of forty-two feet tall from the top of the concrete base to the top of the elevator on the seventy-two foot diameter silos. Uh, future phase would, um, bring two additional seventy-two foot tall, uh, silos to the site. Uh, the facility will operate seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, there'll be three shifts. Um, yeah, I have kind of a, a long-winded explanation of what happens, so made that out here convenient, given the time I'll skip. Um, the proposed site includes seventeen parking spaces with one disabled stall to accommodate a maximum of fifteen employees for the first shift, and then ten employees each for the second and third shift, plus visitor and delivery vehicles. Um, the applicant anticipates approximately thirty semi-truck, uh, per day delivering unrefined flour to the site for processing between seven AM and six PM, five days a week during phase one. Uh, semi-truck traffic for phase two will increase by additional thirty trucks per day. Uh, access to the site and the trucks will be a one-way loop around. Um, I'll get to it in just a moment, but there, UDOT is not granting access off of highway ninety-one, so both the ingress and egress will come from, um.
Level six hundred north.
Thank you, uh, yeah, I was just gonna say county road, but we'll get to that too, so, there's just a little clarification on that. But yeah, so they'll all come from that north, um, road, and not from the, uh, highway. Um, so CUPs, um, are allowed, uh, but they must not be resolved in situations that create a need for essential services that cannot be reasonably met by local service providers. Um, so the code requires that all proposed uses of buildings needing use of water and sewage facilities must comply with the requirements of the Bureau of Health Department, UDOT Department of Environmental Quality, and the Office of the State engineer. Uh, so condition is that prior to recording the permit, the applicant must provide documentation that these agencies have reviewed the proposed development and that the appropriate number of water rights have been obtained, and the proposed septic system is feasible for the facility. They will also need to meet storing drainage requirements and access. Um, a full review of their site plan has not been done by our public works division, um, just because they're fairly extensive and we wanted to get, um, through this portion first. But, um, the access, as I've mentioned, there'll be no access off of highway ninety-one, and it will be from the north road. Um, so if you could see on this site plan. About a little, um, you can see Utah Department of Transportation.
We're not seeing Angie.
Oh, sorry, it's right in front of the face, I did reference.
We look good up there, but.
I'm kinda getting tired of that.
Sorry. Alright, so here it is.
Page thirteen.
Sorry about that, so you can see if I click on the road, like the highway, uh, the property lines for UDOT actually extend along that north frontage, past the railroad tracks. Um, so there was some initial confusion about who's being granting access or what requirements are going to be, uh, they'll be held to as far as distancing. Access width, et cetera. Um, so ultimately, it came down to UDOT stating that since it's not identified as a state route, they.
Well, that was easier than it could have been.
It was a little, yeah, it was a little touch and go for a minute, but, um, yeah, ultimately, uh, David from, uh, UDOT did state that even though it looks like it's owned by UDOT, it's not considered UDOT. So they will need to work with, um, the county, uh, engineer to make sure their access and everything is per code. Um, one item is that on their site plan, they show their access width is sixty-nine feet, uh, but county road manual allows only a maximum of thirty-six. Though if they wanna pursue that wide width, they'll have to go through a design exception with the county engineer, so, um, a full review of those plans, as I mentioned, uh, will be completed upon applying conditions of approval. Um, off-street parking, in the letter of intent, um, the applicant has proposed a total of seventeen parking spaces, as I mentioned before, based on the number of employees on the first shift. Um, however, parking analysis was not provided to support that number, um, and it is required per code. And the seventeen spaces don't need to take into account parking needs during shift changes, nor the phase two expansion. So a condition of approval is that a parking analysis needs to be done to address both of the items and determine the exact number of spaces required for this use. Uh, fire control did not have any comments, but they will review, um, the plan review in the future regarding fire suppression, et cetera. Um, solid waste, applicant has stated that byproduct waste generated as part of the operation of the mill facility will be bulk shipped to manufacturers that produce animal feed, and that they'll contract with the local waste management company to collect other waste from the facility. Uh, known or reasonably anticipated detrimental effects, uh, in the ways, uh, operates seven days a week, twenty-four hours, um, however, given the location adjacent to the state highway, the surrounding agricultural and industrial uses, um, it does not seem like this will have a major impact on the surrounding function. So no noise study is being recommended. Happy to not discuss that. Uh, traffic, the increase in.
There's still time.
No, there's not, no, we're nixing that.
The increase in semi-truck traffic onto a hundred and sixteenth north, uh, and resulting conflicts between trucks and general vehicular traffic is a reasonably anticipated detrimental effect. Uh, they will need to complete a traffic impact study, submit that to the county engineer for review and approval, um, and to determine the actual impacts and what road improvements may be required. Uh, the county engineer has already gone ahead and kind of done, um, a baseline study of the trips on that road, so, um, that will be used by the applicant for their traffic impact study. Uh, visual impacts, uh, the proposed flower mill has the silos, the range from seventy-one feet to a hundred and forty-two feet tall. Um, under our previous county code, the maximum height in the industrial zone was forty feet, for a primary structure, thirty-five for secondary. Uh, the county council adopted code changes in August of this year for the industrial zone, uh, that allows for maximum height of agricultural processing facilities, specific to the product, production of food, to be a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the code also ch- increased the lot coverage from fifty to eighty percent and reduced required setbacks. Um, so as we go through the next phase of this, we'll need, um, applicant will provide documentation that all of those development standards are being met. It appears based on the site plan that most are, but we'll just need that confirmation before moving forward. Uh, light pollution, a large manufacturing facility will have a number of exterior lights, um, the applicant stated in their letter of intent, the lighting will be minimal in the parking areas and are sky compliant. So again, they'll just need to provide. So again, they'll just need to provide specific information regarding them. Product notices were sent out, I haven't received any written comments based on that. We do have a number of conditions related to this proposed use, 19 in fact. So, with that, and the conditions of approval placed, staff is recommending approval.
Angie, what's that white line east of the highway, just on the right side? Go right, keep going, keep going, keep going.
That white?
Oh, this one?
Yeah, what's that?
I might have.
It's a pivot in that field.
Might have some micaceous.
Unless that pivot can jump the power line.
Is that a nuclear line or something?
There it goes, it disappeared.
You didn't know.
You gotta hurry, take it off and hide it.
Earthquake fault.
No, it must be...
I've never saw it before, so I don't know what it is.
It's not under one of our geographic... I'll hunt around a little here.
Okay, thanks.
It's not part of the project, so we're skipping it for now. Any questions from the commissioners before we have the applicant come up?
I have none at this point.
Okay, you'd like to come up and... One, let us know if you're concerned with any of the 19 conditions, have any questions for us, and then we may have a few questions for you.
Ed Gavorick with the Bratton Companies, the design builder for the facility, representing the owner tonight. We've seen the conditions, we don't have any real concerns about meeting them. Worked through the process with the engineering group and the building department and all that. So, if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to try to answer them.
I'd like to.
That's great.
Any questions?
No, I just, I have to chuckle when it's described as the purpose is to deliver flour to the local bakery, it just doesn't give you, doesn't quite fit the scale of this project.
With 140-foot silos.
I knew I ate a lot of goldfish, but I didn't know it took 30 trucks a day to take care of me and my boys.
They bait in all the west.
Yeah.
Based on what's in the backseat of my car, my kids go through about that much in a week.
Yeah, we go through a lot. Okay, sounds like you're off the hook. Is there anyone from the public that was here to comment on this? Okay. Oh, dude, we've got, alright, she was debating. You sat here this long, so...
Very important person.
Yes, that's right, same last name. Wendy Christensen from Richmond. Me and my family own the little white house that's across from Pepperidge, on the east side there. So, my concerns are, of course, what are being addressed tonight. Water, lighting, location, commotion, anyway, yes. I just appreciate your considering it.
Thank you.
So, one thing that wasn't addressed here that we addressed with the gravel pit is noise. And Gilgeedge down there to the west, there's quite a bit of noise they make when they're running. Do you, do you have any idea what kind of noise this mill's going to make where it's running 24 hours a day?
So, the mill itself is enclosed in an insulated building, so any noise from the equipment is passed now. Truck traffic, again, we're replacing much of the truck traffic that's going into Pepperidge right now. The flour trucks will no longer be going into Pepperidge because it's a pipeline you're impacting the fence. But you will have grain trucks coming in, so be fairly equivalent to the amount of trucks that were going into Pepperidge.
Air bins closing and opening. One other question I had, though, was, I don't know if they'll have any mechanical loaders or whatever else, but I know with today's standards in most industrial areas, they have to have backup beepers. And this isn't for you, this is the building itself, but it's just a comment for staff. We have the state salt shed right there. You know when the snow happens, if not four o'clock in the morning, you hear their beepers.
And every time they back a loader up.
Yeah, and it looked like the semis are going to pull into a building and just dump, right?
Correct.
So I...
But regardless, my question is, if there was equipment that had backup beepers, or even if industry says they have to have it, is there anything the county can...
You want to let them unhook it?
Well, is there anything the county can do over a 24-hour period at night to have them shut off from nuisance?
We would be trying to supersede a code that's higher than ours. And if someone got run over from one backing up that didn't have a beeper, they come to us. So, we would not want to put something like that, unhook the beepers after midnight.
It's an ambient noise, you ought to live by one, and then I'd love to hear you talk about it.
Yeah.
If I can address that, there's no exterior equipment operating.
Yeah, and it's a one-way loop, right, so it probably won't anticipate trucks backing out.
My house is about, oh, closer, not, it's further than Wendy's from the state salt shed, but I'll tell you what, you can hear it through a closed door, closed window. That beeper on that equipment at two to, at one to four in the morning, it's not, it's not fun.
Very annoying.
It's your alarm going off a lot faster.
That's why you sleep with earplugs every night.
So, these noise deals that we discuss, you know, across the border are interesting.
My wife.
Anyhow.
Okay, thank you for checking that. Okay, I'd look for a motion.
Well, I could make a motion to approve the Utah Flower Milling Conditional Use Permit based on the 19 conditions and two conclusions.
I would second that.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Go make those goldfish.
Right, get that flour going, we need more goldfish. Okay, Tim, who's up on the next one, review of annual commissioner training and upcoming elections. That's one I was interested in, upcoming elections. Get ready, Val J.
Good things always.
I'm too young on this.
That's what I said, I hadn't even, what do you mean? Yeah, I get on, we can't even go with their vice because he's going to be leader.
Alright.
Can't stop it.
Self-ins, it'd be hard.
Yeah, he's got self-ins.
He's got self-ins coming up.
Well, it's a house right across the street, I mean.
You move that up in the farm, you're...
Right there, on that corner.
I'm a pretty good guesser.
Alright, regarding the training, the annual training, it is state code to have the four hours annual, and we hope the guide that was put together a few years ago and is still applicable with suggested training materials, that that's helpful to you. Some of them, if not all of them, could be video training. Some of you were able to attend the Cache Summit today, hopefully you enjoyed that.
We can account for that today.
Well, I think it could be, right, there are two topics that are required topics, and I don't know that today's Cache Summit addressed the required. So maybe we need to update the training guide, we'll take a look at that and send you any updates, but it...
That one we went to at Utah State, for those that attended, did that give us two hours, at least?
Yeah, the mid-year Cache Summit that we had left.
Right, there would be a...
And so generally speaking, you need four hours of training. One of the hours has to be the Land Use and Management Act. And I can't remember, there's another one.
Those are listed in that little guide that we put for you, Grandma. And so, today's training could have been, would be, two additional topics, an hour each for the other two hours. As far as reporting, we did invite you to report and to us, but then when we found that there's really no further reporting to the state that's required, and we think it's just kind of on your honor system. So, you and your integrity as a planning commissioner and just watching those videos and...
Does next week's Zoom cover any of that on November 8th?
It would. Yeah, so it's on November, yeah, so the state, UAC is doing a training on some of the updated code, and that would count, and I'm pretty sure that would count towards your legal training that you have to do, so we can get you a link to that. Okay, it's only, it's only an hour.
Yeah, it starts at 10, it's not very long, but that should give them some...
Yeah, it's free, so you can just log in.
So, you guys will send us some links, you said already?
It's in that PDF document in today's packet.
It's either you can pick from.
And it's a lot of resources from Utah League of Cities and Towns.
Now, do we need to fill this out and sign it for you?
I didn't mention...
I just saw it sitting there for us. I just know they called me the other day for the district, and I've got to do something. I assumed it was the same thing.
Yeah, our HR department was contacted by URS indicating that any appointed official who receives any sort of payment, even if it's a minimal stipend, has to be registered with HR. So, that's what the paperwork is for, and yes, we do, they do require social security numbers. So, we do not recommend that you fill that out and email it into HR, but we recommend that either take it directly into them there on the third floor, or you can provide it to staff and we will deliver it to them.
Council tried to give you guys a raise, but there's a state.
Yeah, they won't, they won't let us go above first.
Yep.
It's alright. We get that.
It makes sense to me.
It doesn't either, it seems funny. Maybe we better talk to a legislator about changing that a little.
We countered to URS about having you sign, because by state code, we're allowed to pay you a stipend. Let's just cover your costs of participating and travel and whatever else. But they told us that still counted as compensation, and therefore, we needed to have you guys sign our, so the HR paperwork.
Any elections will be next month?
Next month, yeah.
Tim, for, to start January out?
Yeah, I usually send the bylaws out with this in November, so I'm sorry I didn't attach it to the packet, but I will get that in the packet for next month, so you're aware of the requirements. And then we'll also be reviewing meeting dates for next year. And just looking at the calendar, a couple that I see maybe concerned with is July 4th, is on Thursday, the first Thursday of the month, so would like a week later?
Yeah, for sure.
Doing your civic duty. And then January 4th, would anybody be opposed to maybe pushing that to the next Thursday? Just because with the holidays that turn around.
Staff, staff might not be in the office that week before, the whole week.
Might not have those staff reports out in time. So, those are just a couple of red flags that I see. So, definitely July, we'll move it to that second Thursday. And then, yeah, I'll just take a look at the calendar again. But yeah, there might be a change on the January one. And typically, in the past, the first week of April is spring break for schools, but that hasn't usually been popular. I think we've moved it before, so... Okay, that's all I have, but yeah, that'll be out next month.
Okay. We can have a big one next month?
Are you kidding?
Yes, sir.
Did she say then if we're no? We just print and sign?
Still fill it out.
Hopefully the subdivision related to the H and H one is on.
Yeah, hopefully that one gets there. Okay, commissioners, anything else? And with no objections, we'll adjourn until next month. Thank you.
Thank you.